Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Town of Kent Planning Board meeting for October 2022. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And before we start, I have a couple of announcements. Unfortunately, our esteemed colleague Dennis Lowes is leaving us, and the Planning Board joins me in wishing him success in the future.
Thank you very much.
And secondly, I heard that Mr. Simon Carey is running for Town Board.
Again.
Is that true, Simon?
Thanks, Dennis.
Yes.
And now, on with the meeting. Members, have you all read the minutes from the last meeting in September?
Yes.
And can I get a vote to accept? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from Anunziata, Smalley Corners? Do you have anything to add to this?
I think you're all familiar with the Anunziata project.
John, let me interrupt you. Please say your name and your affiliation.
Sorry. My name is John Andrews. I'm with Rhodey Slaycon Andrews. I am the consultant to the Planning Board and a New York State licensed professional engineer. Anunziata is a single-family home on an existing lot of record that requires an erosion control plan. Their engineer has made certain submittals. I think most of the issues raised by Mr. Barber and myself have been pretty much resolved. The board made a determination to hold a public hearing on this matter. The issue tonight is a public hearing, and our recommendation would be upon the close of the public hearing, provided there are no substantive public comments. We would recommend that the remaining project review be referred to the Planning Board consultants to be handled administratively.
So we need to open a public hearing?
You do, sir, yes.
Can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this issue?
Don't everybody rise at once?
Yeah, please. You in the back! Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There being an overwhelmingly inconsequential public comment, no new submittal was made, but I think this is one of those ones that you could possibly move to administrative review to finalize things, but I'll defer to Bruce.
I'm Bruce Barber, Town Environmental Consultant. Yeah, as John had indicated, we have not received anything since your last meeting in September from the applicant's consultant, but as of last month, there were just a really few odds and ends left for both my memo as well as John's to be fulfilled. So I concur with John that the board, if they wish, could send this to administrative track to iron out those final items and move this along. Okay.
Questions, anyone?
No.
Thank you, Bruce. Liz, do you have anything to add? Members, shall we send this to administrative track? Can I get a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
And a second, please.
I'll second it.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's move on to Kent Cell Storage, Farmers Pride. Is there anyone here, anyone? Please, Liz.
This is very quick. Vera sent me a record of all the bills that had been paid and the remainder of the escrow, and I think the last bill was back in 2021. And I'm pretty sure she reached out to all of us. She reached out to me. No more bills, so there's no reason to keep the escrow anymore. And the project, I asked Vera to get a withdrawal letter, and so she got that, and that's in the file now, so the project is withdrawn. And I recommend that the Planning Board can release the escrow. But before you do that, I should have said that my name is Liz Axelson. I'm a consulting planner from CPL, and I am the planning consultant for the Planning Board. That's it.
Thank you, Liz. Can I get a motion to release the escrow?
I'll make that motion.
And a second, please.
Ouch.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Balance on unpaid bills on it?
That's what she was just calling.
They said no.
It's clear.
They said it's a bad thing.
All right, who's working tonight?
Me again. Flintlock Storage, we did have an offline consultation meeting some time back, and we knew they weren't going to make a submittal for this meeting, but we hope to see a submittal for the next meeting. White Vernon. Come on up, we'll do a trio.
The board will recall that White Vernon had pretty much gotten to the finish line with one exception, and that was the access issue. There was an easement that was providing access to the property, but unfortunately, when that easement was created, it did not include utility installation. And so we suggested to the applicant's consultant to find an alternative spot to bring in their utilities, which they've done so off of Nichols Road. John and I had a look at that. It has a minor wetland component to that. The applicant has applied for a wetland permit for minor disturbance. We did receive a letter from NISIG that they've gone out to the site and found it to be feasible to install the electrical utilities to the house from that location. So we're basically just waiting to finish some odds and ends on that as well. That's where we are with that.
Thank you, Bruce. Questions, anyone?
Rannieri, John, you want to come up for that one, too? So we had a meeting today with Mr. Rannieri, Jack Correll, and also Bob Bradley. This is the application, if you recall, that had an access question, town road issues, some perhaps ownership and deed issues, some fill that was brought into the site that needed to be remediated, some wetland issues, et cetera. So what happened was that we were able to sit down today with them and really go through the nuts and bolts of what needed to be done to kind of get this moving and get it going along, and I think we were successful in doing that with the applicant's engineer, through in great part to what John did in a meeting with Rich Othmer. So the wetlands are going to be addressed. They're going to provide an updated plan to the board for your review on how to mitigate the filling of the wetlands that occurred out there. They are going to be addressing mitigating the soil pursuant to DEC requirements, and that's going to be addressed, and I'll let John talk to you about the roadway.
Thank you, Bruce.
So if the board may recall, the highway superintendent had some very strong opinions. I think you all went out there and took a look at it. It wasn't as everybody visualized it sitting here at the Planning Board. So Highway Superintendent Othmer asked that I develop a series of design guides and other things to provide their engineer and actually come up with a sketch of what would satisfy Mr. Othmer. What we're going to actually do is slightly modify things to construct a modified hammerhead turnaround for the town at the end of Hillside Road. So what we're going to do is eliminate a portion of what Mr. Rannieri wanted as his driveway, turn it into a town turnaround, if you will. So a portion will go downhillside, a portion will go up Sunset. If you remember, those two roads kind of intersected his property, changing his driveway. We gave all the guidelines and standards to Mr. Correll and Mr. Rannieri. They seem to be willing to undertake the work, and we're going to go back, and Jack was going to work out the details and modify his design based on what Highway Superintendent Othmer and I had put together. We also made some suggestions with respect to the driveway and some clarifications, and I think Mr. Correll fondly understands the difficulty of some of the things that he proposed. Bruce came up with an interesting idea. We're going to, there were some wetlands that were filled inadvertently through the years, so by changing his design and changing some direction of pipe goes, we're actually going to create some new wetlands and actually mitigate the impacts of the fill. So all in all, I think it was a positive meeting. Mr. Rannieri left the meeting finally, I think, seeing light at the end of his tunnel. So what they're proposing to do is make a submission as soon as possible to get on the next meeting, I believe.
Yeah. The one thing that was remaining that Mr. Rannieri was going to check into was he was going to have his attorney speak with the Planning Board attorney, because if you recall, there were a lot of different tiny parcels that he'd purchased over the years to assemble this one piece. Liz had been working on that as well, just to make sure though everybody's in the same position with those land ownerships and deeds. Other than that, we encourage them to get stuff in so we can be on November meeting. Board can review it if you're comfortable, perhaps schedule that for the public hearing for December. So that's where we are with that.
John?
Yes, sir.
Does this mean that the town is going to plow the snow on that dead road without it being dedicated?
Well, no. Here's, here's.
Or is it kind of a?
What Highway Superintendent Othmer has asked. If this turnaround gets created to his satisfaction, even though it might be slightly below the standard turnaround, he's willing to, if the applicant petitions the Town Board, to recommend the Town Board take over the road for operation and maintenance, because we're going to get a whole new end to the road. And that addresses his concern. The town has been reluctant to take it over because there's no turnaround.
Yeah.
If we get the proper turnaround, Superintendent Othmer is prepared to recommend to the town that we take it over, because apparently some of the other owners along that same stretch of road have been very interested in getting out of the road business.
Yeah.
So once we get this resolved, there is that potential that the town could be asked and may need to consider whether or not they accept it.
Well, the old subdivision maps show that road inbound there going way out around the whole development.
Yeah, we would only take it, we would only take it to, we would only take it to two points beyond the constructed turnaround.
Yeah.
So it would be a limited, it would be a limited acceptance, but it would at least mitigate the concerns of snow removal and having a proper turnaround.
Yeah, and the people along there don't have to have a private contractor anymore.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
So we had taken a look at the stipulation, and there weren't any maps that were part of the package, and so Paul Lynch gave us a set of maps, and then we had a little consultation back and forth with Bruce and I and John to make sure that the setbacks from the town jurisdictional wetland and the Army Corps wetland were properly shown. And then we got a nice new set of maps, and only some of them had those boundaries on them, so we said, hey, can you put it on all of them? And they did, and I took a look at the set today, and it's good, so I forwarded it to you all and Lana Capelli and Jamie, and to make sure that they were aware that we have a set of maps that should go with the, I mean, finally executed stipulation. That's that. That's Holly.
So first, some of these.
Next is DEP.
Where?
DEP in Seven Hills, nothing new. Kent Manor, anything new? Nothing new on Kent Manor. Route 52 Development, nothing new there. Freel and Pure, nothing new there. Town of Kent Mining Law?
You started later. Yeah. I developed the law.
Okay. So Bruce and John and I had reworked and created a new draft based on some comments that we had from Ann Campbell. We went through it a few times, a series of Zoom calls, where we all just sat with the law on screen and made the edits together, and then I wrapped up a few of those, and then we sent the draft along, so. Chris, come on up.
Town Councilman. So what Liz said is correct. We have gotten the draft version that we think that we like of the mining law. We have passed it on to the Planning Board. It's my understanding that you guys did not have a workshop last time around, so I would hope that you guys would have a chance to look at it and discuss it in your next workshop, unless there's any major changes that we want to undertake at that point. I think we'll have another joint planning Town Board meeting just to discuss it all together and then move it on to its next and hopefully final stage. So any more questions on it at that point?
Everyone?
Sure.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, good. Okay. So I think it would be good if the board could do this in workshop for two reasons. One, it'll allow you to really focus and get into it, whatever, you know, in other words, sometimes.
It's the only place we really can do it.
What?
It's really the only place we can do it.
I think so. I think so. And the other is an ulterior motive, because I won't be here for the regular meeting, and I'd really like to be involved.
I don't think we're discussing doing this in regular meetings. This is a workshop.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
We'll do a joint workshop and we're going to finalize all of the workshops.
I mean, in the regular meeting after we discuss it, we can vote to send it to you guys.
Yeah, sounds good.
Now, if I may, have a few minutes of your time. Dennis, would you mind stepping up here for a second, please, next to me? Please?
Get out of here. Let's get you a severance pay.
Don't mind that red light under four inches.
I'd see it shining at us. Dennis, on behalf of the Town of Kent, for your eight years of service on the Planning Board, which you have been a gentleman the whole time I've been on here for four years, I have found you knowledgeable, informative, and not only do you explain things well to me, you listen, too, and I really appreciate that. It's my pleasure, on behalf of the Town of Kent, the residents of the Town Board, to help you with this. And I. Now, I did hear, I did hear that you were, I heard you were heading down to Florida, and I hope that in January or February, when we're hitting the negative minus numbers up here, you'll tuck away up a little of that sunshine and remember us and send it back up to us. But thank you again for all your time and service. It's been a true pleasure serving with you.
Absolutely.
Totally unexpected people, and I certainly appreciate it. It's been a really good experience staying on this planning board. We've accomplished a lot of good stuff, and for the most part, we've worked with some really good people. I've worked with some really good people, sitting here behind the dais, and it's really been a very rewarding experience for me, and I told you before, it's like a. Kathy's the one that took my original V-thing when I turned it in, turned around and put me on this board, so Kathy, it's been a good session, and I really enjoyed working with everybody here, and I wish everybody good fortune in the future, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And he's done a great job. And we're, oh, it's much too early. We'll have to stay here for a while. But please don't say anything. We have to stay quiet.
Why? We got a limit to the time here?
The town supervisor said we have to stay till seven, eight-thirty. But we won't do that. Can I get a motion to close the meeting?
So move.
And a second, please.
The folks here.
Oh.
How can we help you?
Please come up.
Please speak into the microphone and say your name and why you're here.
Sandra DiBenardi Girardi. I'm a homeowner on property at 120 Smalley Corners Road, and I did receive a certified letter regarding dwelling going on next to me, to the right of me.
Anunziata.
I beg your pardon?
Anunziata?
Yes, well, I am under the impression that.
Okay, yeah, we, you were a little late, I'm sorry, but we'll listen to you.
Thank you. This group is part of the, we have a private lake. At one time, we're to be a sub-development, and the person who keeps in touch with our lake taxes has informed me that this property is no longer under Anunziata. It has been recently gone under a lot of transactions. There was Anunziata and some mention of a Dr. Nguyen, I think, or Kim, and now I believe the property is owned by Surili or a real estate agent. Can someone verify that? I'm very confused as to what's been going on. I did attend a meeting here earlier this year regarding some sort of leeway for this property. It's under two acres, and this piece of documentation that I did receive says that this particular property is, no environmental review required, and I'd like to know more about that. When I built my property some twenty-odd years ago, we had very strict restrictions as to where the property could lay. The whole thing is wetland watershed, where the house would be, intermittent water course affecting the plot in and of itself, $50,000 worth of septic field put in for a three-bedroom home, and I'm curious why this particular piece next to me, which has been on the market for probably over thirty years, yet has not been dwelled, difficult property to dwell. So someone is asking for an erosion, steep slope erosion control permit? I don't know anything about this, and I am the direct and only neighbor, so can anybody enlighten me or guide me as to how I can perhaps request a postponement of this? I'm totally confused as a homeowner.
Liz, can you help? Or John? Or Bruce?
Okay, so I only caught the tail end of what you people were discussing, but you hello.
I'm Bruce Barber, Town Environmental Consultant.
Hello, thank you. Yes, nice to meet you, sir.
So I'll do the environmental piece, and I'll have John do the erosion semi-control, okay? So the phrase "no additional environmental review required" has to do with a classification under what's called the State Environmental Quality Review Act, or as we call it, SEACR. Different projects have different classifications: Type 1, Type 2, and Unlisted. When you're building a single-family home, okay, and it's uncomplicated, such as this particular property where it's just a single-family home, it's a Type 2 action, okay, and that means basically no additional environmental review is required. Now, that does not mean, though, that no environmental review was not conducted by this board, because an extensive environmental review was conducted. First, a representative from John's office and myself went out to determine if there are wetlands on the property or not. Well, there's a, there are not, but there's, I know where you're talking.
Water course.
Drainage area. See, in the Town of Kent, in order to be classified as a regulated water course, it has to flow at least nine months out of the year, and I went out there several times to see if it was flowing or not. It was only once after heavy rain that it was flowing. So although it's a drainage area, and John's going to talk to that as well, it's not considered a regulated wetland by the town because it does not have enough water in it for a longer period of time.
Because I was placed under that very restriction, which caused a lot of concern for my husband, and I was no longer with us.
I bet.
And that property is running its water course from that to me, so I don't understand how that property is not classified. I don't understand how that property is not classified, and yet we are at the adjacent property.
Right. So, you know, the water's starting not from the property next to you, but actually several properties up from that, up the hill from that.
It flows towards the lake.
Correct. And so what's happening is as it's collecting water from each property, there is indeed more and more water coming to that ditch or drainage area that you're talking about. When it comes to the property next to you, there's not enough water in that for a long enough period of time for a couple of things to happen. There's not enough visible water in there to say it's flowing nine months out of the twelve months of the year. There's also, when we dig down in the soil at the base of the stream, what we might find is something that has water in it for a long time is something called hydric soils. It's a classification that you see of soils that are wet a lot. They look very dark in color compared to like Sandy Beach, which is very light in color. It doesn't have that either. So in other words, are you sure aware that there's drainage coming through there? It's just not a town-regulated wetland pursuant to our town code. Now, as the water flows down further, more and more water is coming into that area. Your property has maybe enough that at the time you built, it is a wetland because there's water there long enough, maybe the slope's a little bit less. So that's perhaps the explanation. I don't, I haven't been to your property. We had the applicant do a tree survey, because there's a lot of mature trees on the property, and we want to conserve as many trees as possible, and the board, basically, the gentleman had asked for a tree waiver to not do that, and this board actually required the tree survey to be done because the board was concerned with all the trees cutting down. And what happened was, all the trees, as you come into the property, there's kind of a fairly flat area, then there's a bunch of rock outcroppings, and then it goes to a higher location. All the trees in the front of the property are going to be conserved except for where the driveway's going from the road up, and so a majority of the trees are not going to be cut because the board had them do a tree survey and locate the property in the area where the least amount of trees possible are going to be cut, and the septic system will be going in. So the tree survey was done. We also did what's called a short-form environmental assessment form, looking at a variety of other environmental concerns, and so this is all the information that the board requested to be compiled prior to them giving any authorization to move forward on this. So does that help answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to ask John to talk to you about the erosion semi-control questions, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
My name is John Andrews. I'm the engineer to the Planning Board. The first question you asked is ownership. We received a submittal in July of this year. Attached to that submittal was the court of deed and easement. Looks like the property was owned originally, when it was in front of the board, by VMS Pizza One LLC of Mayo Park. They sold it to 230 Oak Road West LLC of Mayo Park. Our understanding is that Mr. Anunziata somehow is involved in those corporations, but that's what the deed information that was submitted to us says.
I was told by somebody related to my, my taxes, probably a real estate agent who was.
I can't, I can only, I can only tell you what our records reveal meant, and you can see it right here. It was, we reviewed it in September of.
Okay, I think since this time, something has transpired. Why would I say that? Because the tax bill that I collected after submitting.
That's the pizza place.
Was including the property adjacent to me, and now I find out by the person who coordinates my neighbor, the land tax, the lake taxes, that there's some change of ownership, and monies have to be, again, reevaluated because, yeah, so I'm totally not sure that that is accurate from September to today. So what can I do? May I adjourn this until I look further? I'll hire a lawyer if need be, because I'm concerned. I mean, this property, I'd like more information.
Fortunately, we have to go by what's been submitted. I mean, we can certainly ask the question.
Yes.
I mean, they're not finished. They didn't get their final permit yet.
Okay.
All right? What they require here, they are building a single-family home on this lot.
Yes.
They are disturbing greater than 5,000 square feet, which, under our code, requires that they get an erosion and sediment control permit.
Yes.
It's one level above just getting a building permit.
Yes.
They've submitted a necessary application. They submitted all the appropriate documentation. They've addressed all our concerns substantively. I can't speak to the ownership issue. I can only tell you what was presented to us, but they will get, they require Putnam County Health Department approval for the well and septic. I believe they have that. They require this board's erosion and sediment control permit, and we did work with the highway superintendent to get the road issue and the driveway configured the way he wanted it, so.
I have no idea how that is and how it will encroach if that were.
Well, the plans, it won't encroach on your property. It's completely within their property, and there are maps and plans on file with the town. You're free to look at them. In terms of that drainage way, they are bridging the drainage way. The driveway's going over top of it.
Yes.
We asked that they size an appropriate culvert to be able to transmit the anticipated flow through there, so the driveway culvert, has a sized culvert underneath it, so it won't impede the drainage. The drainage will continue, and.
Pardon me, I may not be asking very closely, but that drainage, when it proceeds.
Go ahead, you go.
When the drainage proceeds along its course, how, if. When the drainage proceeds along its course, how, if any, will that affect my property?
It should not affect your property at all. This is a copy of the plan.
Uh-huh. I'd like to somehow get a copy.
Well, you're going to have to go through the town board or the planning board secretary.
All right.
But here is the property. I'm not sure which property is yours, I assume it's this one.
The four acres next to it, yeah.
Okay. So you can see there's a drainage way through here. They're putting a culvert underneath the driveway. That's the property line?
This is my property line. I'm assuming it has to be. If this is the road, yes. Okay, so theirs is coming right adjacent to my driveway.
There, there's, I think, if I recall properly, is there a stone wall out there?
There is a partial wall on my property, but not the other.
Yeah. So they're, they're on the other side of the wall.
Yes.
And they're, all the work that they are to perform is on their property.
Okay.
There's nothing that goes over the property. I mean, they have-
And do we know where that water diverts to? No.
This water, best, this water, as drainage ditch continues and goes through your property, if I remember correctly, you've got a culvert underneath your driveway, and it goes down along the edge of your driveway and ultimately reaches the lake, I believe.
I can't say. The person who built this house is no longer alive, my husband, so I don't know.
What I can tell out there, the only, there's a small portion of the road here, and there isn't a small existing ditch line along the road. There's going to be a limited amount of drainage, and that's where the highway superintendent wanted it, as been ways been designed, but-
Is that, am I correct in assuming that that goes right onto Smalley Corners?
Goes right onto, the driveway enters onto Smalley Corners, and the ditch runs down the shoulder of Smalley Corners, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right? And these plans are on file, and-
Who might I speak with? Is it that lady right there? Wonderful.
That would be Vera Paxton. You can see her at the planning department.
Okay.
All right? And, you know, he does, even though the board opened and closed the public hearing this evening, there are still issues that he must resolve. And the fact that you, the property's been sold, we're going to have to get clarification on that, I believe. Because-
It's second-hand information. I do not know, but I, it's property.
We're going to have to go to his engineer as best we can.
Okay.
As you saw, the information we have is a recent official member of September issue.
September 1, yes, I understand. Thank you so much for your-
He's getting the sheets.
So I will obtain a copy of this, of that document.
Yes, please come back and see us next month, on time.
Yes. The last time I was here, I was here for a while before, so I apologize for the tag.
All right. Thank you very much.
So when will that next meeting be set?
The third Thursday in November.
Second.
Second Thursday.
Second Thursday.
Roughly, you say?
Uh, 7:30, 7:30, yeah.
For you, 7:29.
No, 7:30.
Are you together?
All right. Not a problem.
Thank you very much.
Just to be clear, this, this application won't be on the next planning board agenda.
Oh, so two months.
I just-
I'm sorry.
No, no. The, what happened tonight, you guys, correct me if I'm wrong here, but they are so close to addressing all the items that remain to finalize and get their permit, that the board authorized them to go into what's called administrative track, which means that they'll make more submittals to address the remaining comments of our consulting engineer, Mr. Andrews, and our consulting environmental consultant, Bruce Barber.
So the issue here is typically administrative track, as it was explained. It means that they've substantively addressed all the concerns, and what's left, pardon the, is to dot the i's and cross the t's. And at which time, we'll recommend that it be signed and signed off on. The fact that you brought new information to light, you can re, you can talk to Vera, you can make a submission, we'll investigate it. The board does have the option, if the information is substantive or has an impact on what they've done to date, they can reopen the public hearing. It's very, very uncommon, I will tell you that. But, so if you really have concerns, the thing to do is look at the plans. I would suggest that one of your best opportunities, and I'm not trying to create work for you, would be to put them in writing. A simple letter, and it doesn't have to be fancy. It can just be bullet points to ask the board to consider. And the board will take that, and we'll take that under review as part of our administrative analysis. And if there's anything that's, that is not properly accommodated, we'll bring it to the attention of the board.
Consider, as in, what specifically do I write?
Well, what, no, you have to write what your concerns are. And, and, you know, to reopen this, this has been going on. Anunziata's been back for almost two years. So, you know, and I don't, please don't, this is not meant to be pejorative. It's kind of eleventh hour for us, so to speak. And, and to be blunt, one of the reasons that the planning board has the option to waive public hearings, and typically on small projects like this, they will do that. The board has found, however, that as land gets scarce and as things get more difficult, it is in their interest to hold a public hearing. That's why the public hearing was held tonight. And to encourage people like yourself to come out. So I think that you really have to educate yourself on the proposal and express what your real-world concerns are. Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, boys.
All right, not a problem.
Thank you. Now, we're worried. Can I get a motion to close the meeting, please? Is there, do either of you have any comments, questions? Liz, did you want to say something?
Apparently.
I think we'd be remiss in suggesting to the board, or at least telling the board, that if you feel that based upon the information that was just received on this application, that you'd like to rescind the administrative tract and read adjourn the public hearing and open it up again, you could so do so. It's just in your authority to do so.
Can we do it next month?
Yeah.
If you'd like to do that. So you could do it-
Just remind us next month.
Provided that, Vera, can it be, does it need to be re-noticed?
Yes.
If the board takes a normal action-
Yeah.
-resolution and rehold the public hearing at a date certain-
So if we need to, we can do this next month.
They'd have to re-notice if you did it, if you did it tonight and said, we're going to do it the first meeting in November, they wouldn't have to re-notice. If you wait till the first meeting in November and say, ah, we're going to have, we're going to rescind the administrative review, reopen the public hearing, you'd have to re-notice it.
But we don't know whether we want to rescind-
You don't know whether you want to or not yet.
All right, so let's let it go.
Okay.
That gives us another month to let things right.
Right.
Well, the thing is just to have-
Let me try again.
Before you do that. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I'm, it's very hard doing a tap dance to late 30. Come on.
A tap dance to late 30.
No, I apologize. But one thing you might want to do, and it brings the applicant and their representative back in front of you, is not tamper with the public hearing, but merely remove the administrative authorization and ask for a resubmittal to address the concerns brought forth by this lady. That's a very simple act you can do right now. Is just rescind the administrative tract, and it brings them back for review, and they'd be on the next meeting.
Do you recommend that?
It puts it back on the active track.
Have we heard anything that makes us think?
That's up to you. I don't.
Because what I want to know is, let's say, we ask the question of who really owns the property, and that, and something comes up with that. At that point, aren't we allowed to be like, well, let's put it back on for a public hearing, like at that point?
I want to-
Can't we do that same thing that you mentioned next month?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Anytime until the chairman signs the plans.
But I think it's important to note that what's being reviewed here is what is happening on the land, not whether one person owns it or not. The only thing that, that the planning board would need to know that for would be to make sure that it's issued to the correct person. But otherwise, who it is shouldn't affect the application.
So, okay, then, what they're doing on that property, we've already figured out, right? We've already gotten through the wetlands, we've already gotten through-
So Sabrina, the answer for the most part is yeah. Okay? Except that both John and I have outstanding memos that we wrote for the last meeting in September that we haven't had addressed yet. And, and a couple of the comments that this young lady indicated to us is in my memo, and I believe John's, with respect to some of the runoff and making sure it's adequately addressed. It might be, as John suggested, a good idea to just say, we're not going to do it administratively. Have Mr. Carell, their engineer, respond to our comments to your satisfaction, because there's some still out there, right? And if such and such is done, then that'll be the next meeting of the goal and be finished. Okay? But there's some outstanding comments that John and I both have, that we feel could be handled administratively. But to be very candid with you, it does include some of the concerns expressed this evening.
I'd have to put a time limit on this, though. I mean, we're this close on this. If the, if the owner were here, they would be most likely saying, wait a minute, we just got voted to go to administrative review. We haven't, we have no information, concrete information, that anything is wrong. So I think, I think we should limit how long, we should reopen it if we're going to open it.
Well, I think we have the time until it's all settled, and we get all the reviews.
And it seemed, it seemed as though what John was saying, if I'm wrong, but it seemed like they were already addressing the issue of the runoff by creating those culverts, right? So-
Right. We had, we had Rich Othmer come out and look at the driveway drainage, too. Another suggestion, entirely different, is to have this resident come and meet with John and I when we do the administrative review, so we can hear her concerns, go over the plans with her, and make sure that we've done everything that she's looking at being answered. And we're happy to do that as well.
That could actually work. Because that's the only concern I have, is this, that she has certain questions, but she can't articulate it right now.
Well, so we can sit down with her, Hugo, and if the board agrees and allows us to do that, I can't speak for only myself, but I'm happy to do that. I'm pretty sure John would be, too.
I'm happy to do it. But point of fact, everything that was asked has been addressed. All the work is on her property. All the work is on, on the applicant's property. The drainage system, we had them resize that culvert, reevaluate it. I made a recommendation to remove some of the retaining walls, because I don't think they're necessary. I think Jack is taking that into account. So the highway superintendent, we specifically met out there, Jack, excuse me, Mr. Carell redesigned the entry to satisfy the highway superintendent. Mr. Othmer has signed off on it. So, I mean, absent anything else, this would, this would normally go forward.
Right. So I don't feel like there's really a need.
But can't, can't we keep it in administrative, we can keep it in administrative track right now, and you'll finish up what the memo is?
Yep, we'll finish up our review, and if there's anything that-
And if there's anything that you can turn up, we'll know next month.
Right.
And does the board wish us to arrange a meeting with, with the resident, so she has some clarity with her questions? We're happy to do that with her.
That's fine.
If you want to, Stu.
Okay. So you're sticking with administrative review?
Yes. That's part of administrative review.
Between now and the next week?
She can come to the workshop.